All our presenters as well and staff. Okay, so with that, we are aware that we're not live streaming with Rogers tonight. So I will start by calling this meeting to order. Welcome, council. See. Too many, too much people work. Okay, welcome, council, welcome staff, welcome invited guests, anyone from the public to our last council meeting of the year of Wednesday, December the ninth. And with that, I will, with welcoming, I will do the council commitment. And we are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penitent anguishine and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as members of council be enlightened and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you all for attending. And with that, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. And at the regular council agenda of December ninth, 2020, meeting of December nine, 2020 be approved as presented. I have a mover and a seconder please, councillor La Rose and councillor Cummings, all in favor. Thank you, that is carried. Anyone having a declaration of pecuniary interest may do so now or at the appropriate time. With, and then we move on to six, which we have deputations and presentations. And tonight we have a presentation from Cindy Hastings and Karen Neeling, Reculture Alliance. Welcome ladies, and it's all yours. I see Karen there Cindy, okay, you're on.
Hello, thank you. And I am going to attempt to share my screen up, bear with me, it's my first time doing this, we'll try not to put my vacation photos up here.
Well, you're on.
I'm on, I've got it.
Yeah.
All right. Perfect. Well, good evening, your worship, the members of council, very nice to see all of you. I'm Cindy Hastings, I'm the new chair of the Culture Alliance. And this is Karen Meiling, our amazing staff resource from the town of Midland. Thank you for giving us the time to present. We present, we appreciate your times precious, so I'll try and get through this quickly. That's why we had the extra details in your council packages. So happy birthday to us, we're one year old as of November. We have straight, stayed true to our mission statement that was developed through our joint working committee of one council member and one staff member from each of the communities. And just as a refresher, this is our committee composition. And we have a growing number of subcommittee members to support our many initiatives. Our committee is guided by our strategic priorities, they're listed here. We reference these priorities on each of the initiatives that we're presenting to you this evening. So COVID, we just nicely got in started when the pandemic hit. But despite this, we had not missed a meeting. Our very hardworking and dedicated committee managed to carry on with actually an impressive number of initiatives that supported our strategic priorities, created new partnerships with other organizations and secured funding. So our cultural calendar continued, although it was a little more sparsely populated than usual. Our goal is to be the resource for all cultural activities in our area. And I should also mention that Karen also sends out a biweekly newsletter that's filled with information about upcoming events for residents and initiatives to support our creative community. Artrepreneur is a program that helps creatives turn their art into a business. So we managed to get eight weeks in before the pandemic hit and then we finished off the last four sessions in October when we were able to do a little bit of the work in person. So these are some of the other activities we had. Culture Days is a national celebration, so that runs from September 25th to October 25th. We put out a call to local organizations and they submitted proposals for this event and we were pleased to promote the programming efforts of, to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, La Claye, Le Mute, Midland Public Library and will hope to continue this program in 2021. We also continue with 30 days of culture that happens throughout the month of September. We encourage residents to engage in one cultural activity a day and then post on social media. Residents were entered into draws for their participation in this program and again, this will be a reoccurring event. The Culture Alliance website acted as host for the four North Suburban municipalities for a virtual Canada Day celebration. We also launched an online cultural festival early in the pandemic to provide residents and local creatives with a with an outlet to celebrate culture that ran from March to July. And finally, the Finding You and Culture campaign was conceived by Georgian college students at Treefort. So the message through finding you was to remind residents that they, in many ways, that they do participate in cultural activities. And again, residents were encouraged to take pictures and promote their activities on social media. The Inspirational Peoples Banner Project, this is, this will recognize and celebrate the contributions of 10 individuals that have made a significant impact in each of the five communities in the Culture Alliance. So through a committee nomination process, two individuals from each of the communities were selected and their images, name and occupation or specialty will be printed on these large banners and hung in their perspective, respective communities. And the winning submissions will be announced, we're hoping in December, I think it's going to be January and we're hoping to have these up in, in the spring. And to identify us as a unique collaboration, actually one of, I think, we believe it's one of the only ones that we know of in Canada. We created a new logo, so it represents each of our communities. And at the bottom, we have the waves that symbolize the connection that each of our communities has with Georgian Bay. So we just finished our Creative Communities Culture Conference. This was actually originally planned as an in-person event. But even though we had zero expertise in online conferences, we felt it was important to carry on. And very thankfully Rogers TV came on as a partner, so they covered the cost of the conference package and took care of all the technical, excuse me, technical aspects of the conference. The theme obstacles and opportunities, finding the path to success focused on how as a creative or a cultural organization, you could adapt during the pandemic and actually even thrive at finding new opportunities that hadn't previously been considered. So this took place throughout the month of November, so there were eight evenings. We had keynote speaker, 15 guest speakers plus moderators. So it was very well, very well received. And the caliber of the topics and the speakers, actually, we got a lot of interest from throughout Ontario. Okay, on to our initiatives for 2021. So we had planned cultural connections for individuals and organizations for 2020, but we weren't able to do this because of the pandemic. These are networking opportunities, so we'll be offering them online if we're still not able to do in-person events. And also plan for 2020 is the cultural enhancements for existing, excuse me, community events. Fingers crossed. Through an application process, we'll be providing funding for one event in each of the five communities to enhance their cultural programming. So this is an exciting initiative, be a tourist in your hometown. So basically a cultural shop local campaign designed to encourage our own residents to take advantage of the wealth of attraction, wealth of attractions, businesses and dining opportunities in our communities. And this is where we plan to partner with EDCNS. So I know Karen and Melissa from EDCNS have already met with the local stakeholders to get this project rolling. New again for 2021, Living History Project, a big part of this, big part of our rich heritage comes from stories of our past. So the group will create a series of video interviews to capture these stories. And eventually these will become a component of our next project, which will be the largest and probably the most important undertaking of the Culture Alliance. The Cultural Asset Database and Map will be the foundation of what we do going forward. So through this exercise, we'll identify cultural assets throughout our five communities. These will include things like local artists, cultural organizations, cultural industries, spaces, facilities, festivals, events, cultural heritage, natural heritage, as well as intangible assets like storytelling. While we were prepared to try, very difficult for a volunteer committee to undertake something like this. So thanks to Karen's grant writing skills, we were fortunate to receive a $75,000 grant through OTF. So that enabled us to hire Stan Tech as a consultant on this project. And Stan Tech will be responsible for collecting the data and creating a database and map in ArcGIS. So there'll be many opportunities for community engagement through surveys, interviews and workshops. And one of our commitments as part of the grant is to hold five community events and capture information for the map. So originally, this was supposed to happen first, but what we're going to do is collect the data first and then present this at these events and then hopefully collect some more information from our residents at that point. And we do realize that this is very important to keep it current. So 2022 and beyond, we're hoping to hire a summer student to keep this going. And we save financials for last, this is a list of our funding and income sources we secured for 2020. We'll honor our commitment that we made originally to continuously seek other funding sources for our initiatives. I know Karen has some ideas already. And we'll continue to leverage the funding that we receive from each of these, each of the five communities to cultivate partnerships with other organizations and then create even more value for our residents. We've provided a draft budget in your council package and we'd like to request continued support of $10,000 from the town of Penitent anguishine in 2021. And just so you know, we're also be asking the town of Midland if they would continue their funding for our staff resource, which is Karen, which we couldn't, we couldn't accomplish all this work without her, so that will be over and above. Excuse me, they're asked for $10,000. And thank you again for your time. I hope I've done the committee justice with the presentation and you're as proud as I am of our decision to work together and support culture in our region and be happy to answer any questions if I can. Thank you. And if I've condensed that enough for you.
Okay. Screen. Thank you Cindy, very good presentation, excellent presentation, a matter of fact. And it's quite evident that the Cultural Alliance is doing a great work and a great job for the four local municipalities and, and both like First Nations. So with that, I'm going to open it to questions from members of council. Any member of council have any questions to Cindy or Karen? Why you getting off the book easy Cindy? Oh, Council of the Volker. Yeah, okay, Council of the Volker, go.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for the presentation as well, I was just looking at the, at the budget. And the balance carry forward from the previous year, I take it the 130,000 that's being brought forward from 2020. A large part of it is as a result of the projects that you weren't even able to accomplish this past year. Is that, that's why you plan to double up and, and do them this year, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, through the chair to Council of the Volker. Yes, so and also included in that is the $75,000 grant that we weren't able to start utilizing in this year, so that's been moved forward too. So yes, we've carried forward all the, all the additional monies into 2021.
Further questions, members of council? Deputy Mayor, do you have, no?
Well. Thank you, your worship, I was just going to congratulate Cindy and Karen. Obviously, from the very beginning days, things have come a long way. And certainly, I hope our council will consider the $10,000 ask, so thank you Cindy for the presentation, excellent.
Okay, and with that then Cindy and Karen, thank you very much for your presentation and, and I'm sure we'll be in touch in the very near future. Okay, moving on to our next presentation, it is from Sajaki Planning, Read the Town Doc Secondary Plan Project. I don't know who we have coming first, Ed, Ed and David. Oh, and I see Dylan. So who is leading the charge here?
David, your worship, I'm going to say a few words at the beginning and then we're going to hear from, from others who are part of the team, I'm Ed Sajaki. I'm a principal and partner with the firm Sajaki Planning. I want to start off by saying how excited we are to have the opportunity to present to you this evening and, and also to, to work with you and your staff on what is going to be an extremely exciting project. The town dock has so much potential and we hope as we work through this study that, that that potential going forward will, will be realized. We go to the next slide, please. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start off by, by introducing the staff and making some further introductory comments. And then we'll turn it over to other members of the team, next slide please. So I, this is, no, no, go back, go back, go back. I have a little story about this. Thank you very much, this is a little daring on our part, but I have to tell you that one of the reasons we're so excited to be part of this is, is our family have very deep roots in the, in the, in the Penitent anguishine, Perkinsfield, broader tiny township in Midland area. My, my, my father-in-law was the Secretary of the Rapists Association for Tiny Township Council many, many years ago. I proposed to my wife Mary at our farm in Perkinsfield. We spent a lot of time there, we now actually own the farm because my, my in-laws are deceased. I also want to say that another member of our team has deep roots and family in Midland. So this is the reason I want to show this slide, because I do remember my mother-in-law taking us to the, to the dock lunch on many occasions and we, and we now, now go with grandchildren and so forth. But so again, we're very excited to have the opportunity to, to work on this project, next slide please. So, so I'm Ed Sajaki and the other members of the team who are here this, are here this evening are David Sajaki, who will say a few words in, in just shortly. Dylan Duesbury, who will also be speaking this evening. And we also have Elise Komoa, who's on, on the line. And I do, I do want to point out for, for those who speak French, that Elise is fluently bilingual and is a real asset to our team. But certainly, as we, as we get into, get into public engagement. With Strategy Corporation, we have Aiden Grove White, who is a member of the team. He is a senior manager with Strategy Corporation, who have a lot of experience in, in public engagement, in, in dealing with, working with municipalities. And very specifically, on the implementation side, particularly around economic development. So we're pleased that, that Aiden is a member of the team. Other, other members of the team are Alexander Frenault, who is with Laura, who are public engagement consultants and communication members of the team, and then assisting us with, with some of the, the writing of the, of the report going forward is Lisa Orchard from a company called Scribe, the next slide please. So the town dock, as you've so rightly identified, is that there's a very strategic part of Penitent anguishine. It's been identified in your strategic plan of being of particular importance. The notion of maximizing the economic potential of the property is, is very significant. And, and looking at redevelopment options going forward. I mean, clearly from this photograph, you can see that, that is very underutilized. With, with a large portion of the property, which is a magnificent property, you know, being devoted largely to parking at the present time. Pleased to see also that, that your, your new official plan identifies the significance of, of this, this part of Penitent anguishine. You do have a grant, which is funded by, by the County of Simcoe, that we're certainly pleased that, 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 that there's a recognition on the part of Simcoe as to how important this property is. And then, then of course, what we've been asked to do is to, is to work on and come forward with a secondary plan, which really is going to set the foundation for implementation going forward. And we'll talk about that a little bit later in, in the presentation. But, but, but what we have identified is that, you know, this is the opportunity to create an exceptional environment and a waterfront for all seasons and that the, and that, you know, celebrates the history of the town and, and the linkages, an opportunity for parkland and linkages into the downtown, particularly as that, as that relates to economic development. Next slide please. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to David Sajaki.
Great, thank you very much, Ed. And as, as mentioned just, just now, my name is David Sajaki. I'll reiterate Ed's comments, just that the whole team is very excited to be part of, part of this team, working with the town to, to create a plan that we see is, is going to improve the Penitent anguishine waterfront and, and really make for a spectacular setting on, on what right now is already the most picturesque area of Georgian Bay, but an area that is presently underutilized. So what I will be speaking to is our vision and approach for the project. And then I'll be turning it over to Dylan Duesbury to, to be speaking to the, the team organization and, and the project plan. So our vision and approach is based on nine principles. And the first principle is for an exceptional town dock and waterfront for all seasons. And as Ed was mentioning, I personally have memories of the town dock since I was a toddler, it's, it's a wonderful place. But as this image illustrates, right now, it's not being used to the best of its abilities. We do recognize that parking is required, particularly for boat launches. But we also recognize that the use and the function of the waterfront can be improved and, and it's an incredibly exciting opportunity to improve it. We imagine a space that becomes a four-season destination with flexible and adaptive areas to accommodate different seasonal events. And we want a town dock that embraces the winter animal festival, boat slips and public boat launch, staging areas for snowmobiles, new and exciting destinations. And one that, that also better utilizes the tourist information center. So our second principle for the plan is to have a plan that reflects the town's history and culture. Penitent anguishine Bay has played an important role throughout the history of the town. And it's important that the secondary plan reflect this role and reflect the, the cultural diversity of this history, including the French, English and Métis culture. There's an idea that we've tossed around that we're phrasing urban design acupuncture. And we believe we can use this idea to wove the history of the town into specific areas along the town dock to really look at how can we identify interactive spaces, educational spaces. And, and the image on the right is, it's actually on Lake Ontario. But it's an image of an outdoor gathering circle and a fire pit that reflects its history. So these are the types of ideas of urban design acupuncture that we believe we can bring forward, next slide please. And the, the third principle is probably key to the entire plan. And that is creating a plan in a town dock that maximizes the waterfront's economic potential. This can be done through engagement, key stakeholders will be leveraging Strategy Corp's expertise on this work and looking to establish a strategic plan that really sets into action key elements, including setting actionable objectives with clearly defined measures of success, ensuring that objectives are achievable and grounded in operational realities, measuring, monitoring and incorporating lessons, lessons learned from similar projects in similar communities. And also again, just really communicating broadly and consistency with key stakeholders to, to maintain a measure of accountability. Next slide please. The, the, I believe it's the fourth principle is to provide an excellent public realm with continuous public access to the water. To the greatest extent possible, we believe that the waterfront should be accessible to everyone and showcase barrier-free design. I don't want to move forward right now with what our recommendations will be, but we think it will be critical to, to the overall master plan and secondary plan approach, next slide please. It'll be also be critical to look at the town dock as a focal point that really connects, as Ed mentioned earlier, the downtown Main Street as well as Parkland such as, and primarily Rotary Champlain Wendat Park. We are aware of significant investments, I believe there's 10.8 million in the, or 10.6 million in the reconstruction of Main Street and 3.8 million investment to Rotary Champlain Wendat Park. We see the town dock and we have ideas for how this can be done. But as really becoming that focal point and creating a green ribbon that connects the downtown to the park system, to the waterfront and keeps people engaged in all seasons, but really importantly, supporting local business downtown as well. Next slide please. It's also important that we have an inclusive and envisioning, inspiring vision based on a creative and forward-thinking consultation program. We're presently working on, on this engagement strategy with Andrea and the town. And we understand that attack, including members of the public, is, is underway to be created. It's also a very unique time in, in everyone's lives, particularly with COVID-19. We're working with Laura Consulting to develop an inclusive online consultation approach. And as Ed mentioned, working with Elise, we have the ability to offer services in both French and English. Next slide please. This slide refers to directions that are created, were created by Project for Public Places. They, they influence the plan for Midland's waterfront. And they also influence the plan for Celebration Square in Mississauga. And it's the idea that there are really 10 actionable items that can be done to create really excellent public spaces. And we'll be using these to influence and guide our plan as well. And these include creating a shared community vision, ensuring public goals are the primary objective, building on existing assets in context, using the water first as public space, using parks to connect destinations and not as destinations themselves, creating multiple destinations, which is the idea of the power of 10. So wherever you are, we want to think of 10 spaces and 10 ideas that are unique on their own, but also connect to other areas. We want to maximize opportunities for public access to, the access to the water, support cycling and walking, well-maintaining parking, integrating seasonal and night activities, designing for flexibility and adaptability in all seasons and designing buildings and spaces that really activate public spaces. And we have a ton of ideas for this as well. And next slide please. Then our second last part of the approach is to create secondary plan directions that are based on a master plan and vision. This vision that we'll be creating will be both in two dimensions as well as three dimensions. And it's going to illustrate all of the key ideas of the plan from, you know, what land uses we're recommending to improvements to the public realm, to, to how can we better connect all of the existing natural and, and, and built assets of the waterfront and of downtown. But we'll also be creating a three-dimensional plan. And that three-dimensional plan will be both a wonderful marketing tool and it'll be used to really help us set what are the key directions that we want to carry forward in the secondary plan. And, and next slide. And next slide is really key to the plan. And it's, it's one thing to create a plan, but it's a whole other thing to ensure that the plan has an implementation strategy that it really can be achieved in the center of economic development. So we know that the town dock redevelopment of it will occur incrementally over time. And the success of that will depend on, on its ability to attract and maintain private investment. Through our approach, we'll be recommending a number of tools that can be used to support economic development and those will include obviously an official plan amendment. But it could include other ideas such as proposal calls as well as another a series of economic strategies to support that implementation. So we'll be looking at the town dock as a way to support both the, the local economy, but, but also the larger. way to support both the, the local economy, but, but also the larger regional economy. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dylan, and he's going to speak to the, the team organization.
Good evening, I'm Dylan. So as you can see, this is the team organization chart that we submitted with our proposal. Our team at Sajeki Planning will be the project lead, project management, land just planning, and we'll be doing a fair chunk of the public consultation as well. We'll be working closely with the town of Penetangwishing Corp Project Team, and we've already met a few members of the town staff at the town dock from our site visit. On our side of things, we'll also have Scribe, as Ed mentioned, working on the technical writing with us, Lura, just to advise on the public consultation side of things, and Aiden from, from Strategy Corp to help with the economic development side. And of course, a very important part is the stakeholders and reviewers, including council, as well as town staff, regional staff, indigenous communities, and the business and development community, as well as, you know, all members of the public. So just go through the schedule. Right now, we're in phase one. So we're right at the beginning of the project. We're currently working with Andrea and town staff to finish up the detailed work plan and the consultation strategy. And we're also starting to review the background documents and, and get together our directions report. And then we'll move into phase two. That'll begin in the new year, which is the visioning and public consultation. This will be an opportunity for members of the public and yourselves and everyone on this call to get involved. And, you know, we start throwing around ideas of what everyone thinks would be, you know, the best use of the town dock and how we move forward from here. Phase three will be putting together a master plan and demonstration plan, so like a 2D master plan, and then 3D demonstration plan, just putting together some of the ideas that have been, come up so far in the visioning. And then there'll be public consultation on those schedules and those plans as well. And then phase four will be turning those plans and the feedback from the public consultation in phase two and three into actual policies for a secondary plan. And then you can see in key events in phase four, there will be public consultation and committee for the whole meeting on the draft secondary plan. And then phase five is just moving through to finalizing and refining the secondary plan. This is just the next steps and where we are right now, because just after we've had the site visit with the town team staff and the kickoff meeting. So we're moving towards finalizing the work plan and the consultation strategy. And then highlighted in the big bubble is the community consultation. That'll be taking place starting in January and going through to May 2021. And then following that, we'll be drafting a final secondary plan and a council meeting following that. So yeah, look out for opportunities to participate in the public consultation beginning in January. And now I'll hand it back to Ed. Oh, sorry.
My apologies, I was being muted here. So I want to sum up by, by, by really outlining that what this is ultimately all about is the path forward, is that the plan should set the framework for, for what you will be doing in terms of implementation. I mean, you will be spending money in this area at some point, and we want to ensure, we all want to ensure, you want to ensure, your staff want to ensure that the money is well-spent. So as David said earlier, we would, we will recommend to you a toolbox of approaches. It'll be anything from, from how you, how you do your capital budgeting when you're thinking of, of this area, so that, so that again, it is, it is money well-spent, but it's being spent in a very strategic way that will, will, will assist in implementing, you know, the overall plan. David mentioned earlier that we, that we think typically in situations like this, there may be an opportunity for a proposal call to, to see, to see what kind of interest there might be in, 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 in the development community, you know, bidding on some portion of, of the site for development. But, but there, there are many other reasons why it's important to have a secondary plan. At some point, you, you may be looking for assistance from, from the county or from, from the provincial government or the federal government, and, you know, they will want to see a plan and a business plan going forward. Again, I think I'm just going to sum up by saying, you have so much untapped potential here. This is an exciting opportunity, and we, we for sure, our entire team is excited to have the opportunity to work with you, your worship and members of council, and with your, and with, with your, with your staff. So, so thank you very much and the community. Thank you for your, your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that.
Well, there's been one more slide here, and I think it says questions.
Okay, and that's the one I was looking for. Any questions? Okay, so Stace or Sarah, could you bring us back to full screen, please? Okay, thank you very much. And members of council now, if any of you have any questions to Sajeki Planning, to David or Ed or Dylan, does anyone have any comments or questions? Counselor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, your worship. Excellent question or excellent presentation, gentlemen. I just had a question with respect to the stakeholders, and we have a private property owner that is arguably right in the center of the town dock area. And we kind of generalized in terms of stakeholders, but I, I would think that the owner of that property has a vested interest in our, in our project. And I was just wondering how we propose to engage him going forward to ensure that he's on board right from the beginning and working with us as we work through this process. Thank you.
I'll, I'll comment on that. I mean, I mean, clearly because of the, where, where he is located, I know he is a very important stakeholder, and, and we would reach out to him, and we, and we would reach out to him very early. I mean, it's not, not, we're not anywhere near, near making any decisions and anything of that nature, but I think it's important that the team understand and council and, and your staff understand, you know, what, what's on his mind and what his role going forward might be. I mean, we, we will rely a lot on your staff for those, those sorts of, sorts of issues.
Yeah, I, I can add to that as well, too. We have identified for early in the new, new year, the first public engagement activity, which right now, we're at the process of trying to understand how that could look like doing it online. But typically, it's an activity where stakeholders and members of the public are consulted on, you know, their priorities for the space, how they use the space, and, and what they see now both as positives as well as items that aren't working at present as well, too. But just also to reiterate Ed's point, I mean, we would have to work, work very closely with the town staff on strategizing in terms of how we actually identify and approach stakeholders.
Okay, further questions, concerns, comments? There being none? No, thank you, gentlemen. And with that, maybe I would say. Bonsoir, les amis, bienvenue à Penetangwishing.
Lisa, are you there?
Allo, bonsoir.
Bienvenue à la belle ville de Penetangwishing, les amis.
Merci beaucoup. Moi, je suis au Nouveau-Brunswick présentement, mais j'ai vraiment hâte de travailler avec vous et avec votre communauté.
Oh, good. So you are in New Brunswick as we speak?
Yeah, yeah, I'm at my, my family lives out east, so I'm just kind of riding, riding the second wave of COVID out here.
Okay, well, we hope to see you in, in our area in, in the new year.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation. We're looking forward to having you giving us some guidance and ideas. And certainly, I think that we're going to be having some form of a, a bit of a committee to work along with you. And so welcome to our home and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, members of council, with that, we move on to number seven, the adoption of minutes not already confirmed. And the council, November 25, special council, November 25, that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted and circulated. Council, 25 of November minutes and special council meeting of November 25. A mover and a second, please. Counselor LaRose, Deputy Mayor Dubois, all in favor? Thank you. That is carried. We move on to eight, which is our consent agenda, and we have none. So we move on to matters for consideration. And with that, we go to a section committee appointments. So to finance and corporate services section, counselor Jill Saindema as chair, counselor Michelle Mayotte as vice chair. To transportation and environment services section, counselor Jessica Clu as chair, and counselor Dan LaRose as vice chair. To recreation and community services section, counselor Brian Cummings as chair, and deputy mayor Anita Dubois as vice chair. To planning and development services section, counselor Debbie Levy as chair, and counselor George Vadevalkar as vice chair. And with that, I would ask that the council of the town of Penetangwishing ratify the council member appointments to town section committees as presented by the mayor. So could I have a mover, please? Counselor Vadevalkar and seconded by counselor Levy, all in favor? And that is carried into just in for members of council, this will be effective January 1, 2021. Now we move on to inclusive communities grant, age-friendly plan that the town of Penetangwishing submit an application to the inclusive communities program for the completion of an age-friendly plan. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments on this? The, oh, deputy mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I received a letter today of further funding possibilities from Doug Downey's office. So I did share the letter with our clerk and with our CAO. There may be an opportunity for funding. I know that there is a grant to being put forward, but maybe this is something else that we could get a little bit more money if needed. So I just forwarded the letter and perhaps someone who could look into things to see if it's advantageous for us or not.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Saindema.
Thank you, your worship. I just did want to, it was going to be part of the announcements is that we, we have been approved for the funding from the county of Simcoe so that we can use those funds to do the, to do the study. So maybe the other funds, we can help to put things into place.
Good. Excellent. Good to hear. Further comments, concerns, questions? None. Did I get a mover and a second on that? No. Well, counselor Levy and seconder, counselor LaRose, all in favor? Okay, that is carried. Move on to C, which is the winter rama maintenance of the waterfront trail, winter maintenance of the waterfront trail. That the report be received for information and that staff advise the Georgian Bay snow riders to continue to run the trail along the groom and groom the trail, TransCanada Trail for the multi-use. Now, members of council might recall is that our last council meeting, I had brought up the fact that there were a number of senior citizens that were hoping that we would plow or keep clear part of the trail for, for walking, since there's going to be a lot of confinement through the winter months, and they want to get out and get some fresh air. Now, with the, the report, and as I'm sure all of you have seen from the report that staff have looked at, and, and then I have to tend to agree that plowing the trail would create somewhat of a ditch. And, and with that, when we had rain or runoff or melting, the trail would be flooded and it could be a icy situation. So I am, I'm told that the, with the snow riders, with the Georgian Bay snow riders grooming the trail, that it is hard-packed and, and so would become a multi-use trail. So we're going to indicate that it, it can be used for the snowmobilers, for pedestrians, for snowshoeing, for cross skiing, or whatever the case may be. And the intent from what I'm told, that it would be posted at both ends with proper signage indicated and all of this. So with that, I'm, I'm proposing that we go along and stay as the status quo. So any other members of council have any comments or concerns or questions? Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, your worship. Just an additional comment. We may want to get the OPP snowmobile patrol in that park, because if it's going to be a multi-use trail, there's a few sleds that go through there a little bit quickly, and we may need to monitor the traffic on that trail or along that part, especially going to the dock lunch and to the, the harbor front.
Yes, I agree, counselor Cummings. And I think it was planned that part of the signage would be signage indicating to snowmobile, snowmobilers to slow and be careful of pedestrians. So, and with that, I think that our staff would certainly look at that other aspect that you pointed out. Counselor Saindema.
Thank you, your worship. Sorry, my fingers keep hitting the video. I just wanted to comment as well. I think with the extra signage, I think it'll make a huge difference. So people are aware that it is a multi-use trail and, and also bring to the fact that the, the, the lights are, are on, on the trail in the evening as well. People may not be aware of that, but that they are on in the evening. So it'll be, it'll be a great, a great spot to be able to utilize.
Yes, as a matter of fact, our director of recreation planning just confirmed what maybe is weak, Sherry, that the, the lights are actually on from 4:30 PM to 11 PM. So it, it can also make it attractive for, for anyone wanting to walk in, in the evening or at night. So, so I think with all of this, I think it should satisfy our seniors and those people who like to walk the trail. It gets them off the sidewalk, and at the same time, I think it makes it safer, they're walking on snow as opposed to a hard concrete. So with that, is council in agreement that we stay status quo and that we instruct the staff to make sure they proceed with proper signage? Madame Clerk?
Um, I would just request that you read the motion and look for a mover and a second and, and take the vote.
Okay, so then the motion is that this report be received for information and that staff advise the Georgian Bay snow riders to continue to run the trail along and groom the TransCanada Trail for a multi-use. A mover and a second. Counselor Saindema and counselor LaRose, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now we move on to this, the sports hall of fame agreement, amendment by law 201777, RCS 2020-28, that the amendment to schedule A of the bylaw 201777, that's outlined in the staff report, be accepted as presented. I have a, well, I have questions or concerns first, if there are any. There are none, then a mover and a second, that the amendment to schedule A of the bylaw 201777, as outlined in the staff report, be accepted as presented. So mover, counselor Vadevalkar and deputy mayor, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And E, Penetangwishing Police Services Board 2020-21, goals and objectives that as per the Penetangwishing Police Services Board's recommendation, council approved the adoption of the 2020-21 Police Services Board goals and objectives as council approved the adoption of the twenty 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 one Police Services Board Goals and Objectives as presented. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments on this one? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, worship. Just a couple of comments. These goals and objectives are no different than any other here, really. It's just major minor tweaking to open communications to our business stakeholders and downtown businesses. They want to improve some road safety. Be it, there's a lot of impairs on the road these days, apparently. And they want to even encourage people to report various incidents, so they're going to be talking to people that way. And they're going to try and get some improved visibility in some of the high incident areas, so.
Very good, good to hear. Counselor Clu?
Thank you, your worship, and perhaps through to Counselor Cummings. I'm not really aware of how the reporting structure works and I don't believe we've had any communication to council from the Police Services Board recently, and I'm wondering how do we get updates about the goals and objectives?
Do you have a copy of the goals and objectives in this agenda from Police Services Board? However, there is, there is on our website as well, the Police Services, what they're doing. So if you needed to contact anyone, or you can talk to me. Or Counselor Mayat is also on the Services Board.
Counselor Clu?
Thank you, worship. Perhaps a preferred method would be something formal to council, that would be very nice. We're seeing a lot of updates to our bylaw, which is great, but I also have no clue what's happening with Police Services in our town.
So basically, I think what Counselor Clu may be looking for is the occasional or a report from Police Services Board to council. Is that correct, Counselor Clu?
That would be just Andy, yes, thank you.
So I'm sure, I'm sure the members of the Police Services Board and I think our C A O sits on that on those meetings as well, so I'm sure we can maybe expect occasional, maybe every two or three months to get a report on what's happening.
Yeah, your worship, I'm going to get the C A O to speak upon this, but we only meet quarterly, so we only meet.
Well, then the quarterly would be.
Yeah.
Mr. Moore, please?
Thank you, thank you, worship. What, so this is an annual, this is an annual requirement that, you know, Police Services Boards have to fulfill. What I would suggest is I can, at our next meeting, I can have some conversation with the board. But I think it would be certainly reasonable to get a couple of updates a year from the board and ultimately from the Detachment Commander, recognizing that the meetings are quarterly. And certainly, I know in previous conversation with, with Mr. Evans that, you know, from his perspective, some of these matters are going to take some time to kind of gain some traction with, so. I am, I'm happy to take it back to the board and have some conversation with them and then make sure that council's getting getting kept abreast of what's, what's happening, what's happening with these. Typically, the other thing I'll add is there typically is an opportunity annually for, for the board to update council. And that, that I think in the case of this past year hasn't happened. And I think typically that happens towards the start of the year, kind of reflecting on the prior twelve months. And I see that our clerk is messaging me as well, saying the same thing, so. So certainly that's something that we will look to make, make happen and have arranged so that council can get that annual update from the board.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, concerns? There being none, I have already read the motion, could I get a mover and a second, please? Counselor Cummings, Counselor Vatimovker, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Moving on to Presentation and Consideration of Report Committee of the Whole, Committee of the Whole Report November twenty five, two thousand and twenty, that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Recreation and Community Services Section be approved. Are any questions concerned? Does anyone wish to pull anything from this? If not, mover and second, Counselor LaRose and Counselor Sainama, all in favor? Thank you, that is carried. Moving on to that the recommendations contained within Committee of the Whole Report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved, mover and a second. Counsel, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Clu, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Transportation and Environmental Services Section be approved. Anyone wish to pull anything from here, discussion, comments? No? Mover and a second, Counselor Mayat and Counselor Sainama, all in favor? Thank you. And that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole Report related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved. Comments, concerns, questions? There being none, mover and a second, Counselor Vatimovker and Counselor Cummings, all in favor? Thank you. Then we have eleven, Presentation and Consideration of Reports, Special Committees. A Special Committee of the Whole Budget, November twenty four, two thousand and twenty, that the recommendations contained within the Special Committee of the Whole Report related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved. Questions, concerns, or comments? Mover and a second, Counselor Vatimovker and Counselor Cummings, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Motions of which notice has been previously given, there are none. Notices of motion, there are none. Consideration of Bylaws. Bylaws that the Council of the Town of Penetang Machine introduced the following bylaws and that the bylaws be read, a first time, indeed to be read a second time and a third and carry. Twenty twenty dash five five to authorize the temporary borrowing of funds. Twenty twenty dash fifty six to provide for a twenty twenty one interim tax levy. Twenty twenty dash fifty seven to set the water utility rates for twenty twenty one and to amend bylaw twenty fifteen dash sixty four. Twenty twenty dash fifty seven to set the water utility rates for twenty twenty one Schedule A A. Twenty twenty dash fifty seven to set the water utility rates for twenty twenty one Schedule A B. Twenty twenty dash fifty seven to set the water utility rates for twenty twenty one Schedule A C. Twenty twenty dash fifty eight Boys and Girls Club of North Simcoe Day Camp Agreement, twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty dash fifty eight Schedule A Boys and Girls Clubs of North Simcoe Day Camp Agreement, twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty dash fifty nine Fire Chief Services with Midland. Twenty nineteen dash twenty seven, C S C H A Fire Chief Services with Midland. Twenty twenty dash fifty nine, twenty twenty zoning bylaw amendment seventeen Field Street. Twenty twenty sixty one S H A Consent Agreement, three forty four Watson Road. Twenty twenty dash sixty one B License Agreement, three forty four Watson Road. Twenty twenty sixty one Watson Road Consent Agreement and License Agreement. Twenty twenty dash sixty two zoning bylaw amendment thirty eight Point Street and twenty twenty sixty three zoning bylaw amended one thirty six Fox Street. Thank God, there's no more. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or anything with these bylaws? Do I have a mover and a second? Counselor LaRose and Counselor Cummings, all in favor? Thank you. And that brings us to question period from media and the public, and I understand that we have none. And then it brings us then to sixteen announcements and inquiries. Deputy Mayor? You're on mute, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I received a phone call today and a letter has been sent to Town Hall in reference to a group of people in Penetang Machine and surrounding communities that are trying to organize an event that were proposed to take place on January first at four o'clock in the afternoon. They, with all this COVID, they think that we need to make some noise and be outside at that hour on January first. So I just wanted to mention it this evening because it is our last council meeting and perhaps Sarah could find the letter and find out who the organizers are and perhaps we could help them spread the word. It sounds like a great idea, so that as it was our last meeting, I just wanted to bring it forward. I think Stacy, you have the letter. Maybe you could bring a little more information forward.
Actually, it was, it was, it did flow through Jen and our mayor has all the details, I think he, I think he stole his thunder a little bit.
Actually, I do, I do, I have received a letter or a request from Jen, about Diner Secretary. And Jen has forwarded this to me and I actually did receive the request from, the lady in question is Christine Lyons. And they have, or they are group organizing that they are contacting the churches and I understand from the letter, their comment that she's made that the Anglican Church is already on board to be ringing their bells at four o'clock on January the first. And they're approaching Saint Anne's to do the same and I'm sure they will. And so they're asking that all of Penetang Machine citizens get out at four o'clock with noise makers, pots and pans, bing bang for approximately five minutes. And, you know, it's, it's just a receiving a new year after going through the pandemic period of time that we have gone through. So if all members of council can relate to their members of family, friends, neighbors and keep it in mind that at four o'clock, get out and make a lot of noise. So that's basically what it is and I can ask Jen to make the letter available to members of council that we receive or I receive and she could make it available to all of council.
Good, thank you, your worship.
Counselor Sainama?
Thank you, worship. On that note, is it possible to do some sort of a post on our, on our webpage or our Facebook page just to share it to the general public?
Well, I think that we could ask Sarah that question.
I don't have a problem sharing that information on our pages.
Are you with us, Sarah?
Yeah, she, she heard and she, she knows about it, so she will, we'll get something organized to make sure the community is aware, it's okay.
Good, thank you.
Your worship, that's January first, correct?
January first, that's right.
Okay, I'm not sure I'll be able to bang pans on January first, but I'll try.
Well, get your neighbors to do them. Okay, and so with that, any further announcements or inquiries? There being none, we will move on to the confirmation bylaw and then that the confirmation bylaw twenty twenty dash sixty three be signed, sealed by the mayor and third and mover and a second. Counselor Mayat and Counselor Sainama, all in favor? And with that, move to adjourn. Counselor Cummings, and we are adjourned. And we will then move on to our Committee of the Whole. Oh, call of order, approval of the agenda, Committee of the Whole, recommended action that the Committee of the Whole Agenda for December ninth, two thousand and twenty be approved as presented, mover and a second. Counselor Mayat, Counselor LaRose, all in favor? Carrie, the declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has declared and if not at appropriate time. Presentations and delegations, all sections, there are none. So we move on to five, the Council Information Package, Council Information Package, December ninth, two thousand and twenty. The recommended action is that the Council Information Package, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Mover and a second. Counselor LaRose, Counselor Mayat, does anyone have anything they wish to pull from the set? No? Okay, all in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. And with that, I move on to C, Section A, Transportation and Environment Services, and I pass it on to Counselor Mayat.
Thank you, your worship. The Consent Agenda, recommended for action at the following consent agenda items have been given due consideration to receive for information. And that is the Midland Penetang Machine Transit Ridership Quarterly Update. Do we have any question on that? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need a clarification. When it says boardings and I'm looking at one particular month, would I be safe to assume that we half that for the actual amount of people that are getting on the bus? Because where they go, they have to come back again?
I guess we can maybe have our matters of transportation, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify the question, I'm just wondering the boardings are the, the number of people getting on the bus and the actual departures are the people getting off. So the accounts for the boardings are people getting on at that particular stop and the departures are people departing the bus and leaving and getting, going to that particular bus stop.
I'm still unclear, Brian, forget, perhaps you can go to the chart where it just says boardings. There's no departures anywhere on that chart.
Sorry, we're looking at the departure, the table on page three of the report, Counselor Cummings?
It is, it's actually page two. The Midland Penetang Transit Ridership.
Oh, sorry, the, the actual ridership count, you're, you're wondering if that's boardings as opposed to departures?
Yeah, like that's, that's a total number, but I mean, if they go somewhere, they're coming back.
Correct.
In most cases, so.
The ridership that you're seeing in the ridership chart there for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, those are paid boarding, so if you're getting on the bus, each one of those number figures represents a paid boarding, so it's it doesn't include transfers because those are free. But it, those are paid boarding.
So I would, I'm safe to assume that almost it would be in half then for the actual right person, actual person getting on the bus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more question on this? Can I have a mover and a second? Counselor LaRose is seconded by Counselor Levy, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Matter of consideration, the separate Transit Service, R D S, twenty nineteen dash twenty nine, recommend for action that council approve Option One as outlining, outlined within a staff report. Now, I don't know if everybody looked at it, what they want, what they would like to change on it. But if we have any questions, our manager of transportation is here, so. And I do believe that Counselor LaRose first. I know Counselor Cummings, I apologize.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Counselor LaRose doesn't have a tooth, I apologize.
Maybe you should. Yes, it's a great report. I really like the report, however, I don't believe that I would vote for Option One. I believe that with the skyrocketing seniors and mobility problems that are happening in our town. our town, and they continue to escalate, and most of the services, our physio services, our dialysis, our family health teams are all moving further and further away from us. And these particular services, three services that are in the report are right now stretched and are overwhelmed with the amount that they have to transport. I don't believe that they are an accessible, accessible transit. And I think we should look at exploring possible cost sharing with Midland or the North Simcoe municipalities. Midland has four vans that I know it's costing them a lot of money. If there was a cost share between them and us, I think certainly we would, we would both benefit from it. And I know, I realize that it's not a money-making venture because it's only 250 is the maximum we can charge. However, I think our seniors deserve to be able to get around our municipality and into appointments that they need to. I had a call today that the TLC program that Community Reach has right now has 254 Penetang residents on their list who either have to go weekly or daily to, to appointments in Midland Penetang areas, and they can't get that transportation. So I'm just a little bit worried that we're saying, let's leave the status quo. I think we need to investigate an accessible service. And basically, I think we have the means to do it.
Counselor Levy?
Thank you very much. I tend to agree with Counselor Cummings. This issue isn't going away. The need is growing. The, particularly the low-income seniors who don't have a huge support system, they need to get to their appointments. And I think we should look further at the options, including greater financial contribution to Community Reach or partnering with Midland. But you know, as Penetang Machines rep on the Transit Committee, I would like to see us delve into this. Particularly right now, people's needs are definitely not being met. Their appointments are still, they still have to get to appointments. All of the groups that are providing transportation are bare bones right now because they rely on volunteer drivers who aren't necessarily driving during COVID. So I think we have a real issue and have to take the opportunity to serve our folks well. And I'm glad to hear Counselor Cummings acknowledge that it's certainly not a money-making endeavor. But it has always been our intention since we started the transit to incorporate more accessible transportation. And I'd like.
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Do we have any more this question, questions on this matter? More discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does this item need to be deferred for further information? Perhaps in the new year, you could come back with some dollar signs attached to it?
Okay, or Stacy, go ahead?
Just because I think that it's, it's not a recommendation that's included in the report, and we don't want it to be defeated necessarily. It could be referred back to staff with a little bit more clarity now that this conversation has happened. Our Director of Public Works, we can update that referral items list to sort of add a little bit more clarity for him to go back and, and continue investigating if that's what council would prefer.
So is that what, okay, Counselor Cummings, one more time?
Thank you. And that's basically what I was going to ask is if we could make a motion to refer it back to staff to explore option three, which is not having our own distinct one, but exploring possibilities with Midland and possibly the foreign North Simcoe municipalities.
Okay, Counselor, by the Moncah.
In reviewing the report, I, I tended to support option one. I'm not adverse to exploring option three, but my concern is on a go-forward basis for 2021, I still like to see the current service continue, and I'm hoping that it will. My concern is that it's going to take some time to fully explore option, option three. There could be a financial impact on the municipality. We're fairly close to approving our 2021 budget. I just, I'm just concerned that if we defer this, that the services that are currently being delivered may be in jeopardy. I just want some assurance that in referring this back, that the current, current services that are being delivered are going to continue.
Thank you, Counselor, by the Moncah. Any more discussion on this? So what is the wish of council? Just leave it as it is, but look into it to the future, Mr. CAO?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I just wanted to add is that the county of Simcoe, as council knows, is also doing a review of a number of services, pardon me, and one of the eight services that the county is reviewing is transit. So the timing may not align as nice as what we would like it to, but ultimately, they are going through a review and will be consulting with stakeholders and as well as the lower tiers and the public throughout 2021 with the intent to come back, to complete that review in the spring of '22, and then review the findings with their Regional Government Review Service Delivery Task Force and Council in May of 2022. So I realize the timing may not align. I guess my point is more that, you know, while, while we, you know, if the direction from council is to consult with our neighboring North Simcoe municipalities, I think we ought to also engage the county in that conversation as well and see what they may be able to offer, what role they might be able to play from an accessible transit perspective.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. I guess we can. I guess we can vote on this, and if it passes, we can maybe put something in there or make an amendment to it that, you know, we look into it a little bit further, but like we were saying, we don't want to lose the services. As Counselor by the Moncah was saying, let's keep the services going, but have a better detailed report for the, for the future. Is that, go ahead, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my worry is that the existing services are overwhelmed at this point now. They always have been. And so our residents are really not getting the services at all. So Midland, as I said, Midland has four vans sitting over there, and I know it's an expensive venture. And if we're going into a service, service delivery review, quite possibly something in the meantime to supervise and to serve our citizens is to go into a cost sharing with Midland for the year and then see where the service delivery model comes from.
Okay, next person was Mr. Mayor?
I guess my, my question would be.
Well, being that option one is to keep status quo, we would keep status quo. It's sort of, we have, would have no action. It wouldn't be ideal because a staff member has created this document in order to get direction, but the motion being defeated would create no action for staff. And we would continue our transit system the way that it's currently running.
The way that it's currently running, okay. You have more to add, Mr. Mayor? No?
Not just at the moment, I'm going to listen to Counselor LaRose first.
Well, we've got Counselor Levy was up next and after Counselor LaRose. Counselor Levy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was just, first of all, reaching out to the North Simcoe isn't really going to work because as our Transit Committee knows, they can't even come up with a transit system, let alone accessible. So our best bet is Midland, in my opinion. And I think we can task the director with reaching out to the folks we work with from Midland and put together a report that we could see fairly early in the new year. In the meantime, we have to go with status quo because that's what we've got. But I think we can bring this back to council in a fairly timely manner. I'd like to hear what Brian has to say about that.
Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say, I would suggest if we vote on this tonight, we accept the recommendation as is and just add it on as a key deliverable at the end of the agenda. Staffs obviously heard what, what most of council looks like they, they want to hear and let them come back with, with a new recommendation.
Brian, do you want to add anything or do you got all that information?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's, that's clear. And to address Counselor Levy's question, obviously, if it's the will of council to explore that, that service, we will, we can, we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess we're going to vote on this one here to pass this here tonight, and then we're going to get a further report from our Director of TNE. So we read the motion recommended for action that the council approve option one outlined with the staff report. Did I have a mover and a seconder on that or? Counselor Rose, Counselor by the Moncah, all in favor? And pass, thank you. Item number two, proposal amended to the traffic parking bylaw 2012-23, RDS 2020-25, recommended for action that council approve the proposal amended to the traffic bylaw as outlined in the staff report, and then the staff be directed to bring forward the necessary bylaw for council approval. Now, basically, if you looked at your report, is what they want to change is the parking on the street. Like at present time, it's from 1:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You want to change it from 12:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's because of the two shifts that we have now with the snow removal. If anybody wants any more answers or if they got any questions, we have, as you hear from TNE, do you have any questions or? No, can I have a, oh, maybe I'll have a mover first and a seconder. Can I have a mover for this? Deputy Mayor and Counselor LaRose, okay, do we have any discussion on this? Counselor Sanama?
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I guess my, my biggest concern is if, if they don't, if there's no street parking until 8:00 AM, if people are starting work at 8:00 AM, like is that going to be creating some issues for, for people? Like I can, you know, the 7:00 AM we can deal with, but that seven to eight could create some, some major problems for some, for some individuals. So that's, that's my only concern about the, the time that they're asking for.
Thank you, Counselor Sanama. Counselor Levy?
Thank you very much. By 8:00 AM, well, I live on Church Street, Brian lives on Church Street, by 8:00 AM, everybody's vehicle's on the road as there's snow blowing. I was busily clearing his driveway so he can get to work, or some woman who's out shoveling, like I just, I don't see that 8 o'clock is doable. Even seven is a bit tough, but it's what we've lived with. I just can't see 8 o'clock.
Any more questions or concerns, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. In a non-COVID year, you're going to have people parking on the streets till after 1 o'clock or until 1 o'clock at least. So you're going to run into that problem. Parking lots will be full still. So I really have a problem with it going back to 12 because there's still people on the roads.
Any more discussion on this matter? Brian, do you have anything to add to this or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the reason, reasoning which is outlined in the report is the fact that we're going to a two-shift system and the fact that the two-shift system, the night shift operates until about 7:30 in the morning and starts at about 11 o'clock at night. So in order to allow the, the road patrollers and the operators to remove vehicles prior to getting and starting your shift and plowing snow and getting those cars off the road where necessary, the road supervisor recommended a shift in the, the parking restriction hours to enable. Move snow and enough of the day and the shifts.
Hey, thank you, Brian. Do you have any more discussion on this matter? Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder. I guess we're going to vote on this. All in favor? One, two, three, four? Opposed? One, two, three, four? I'll vote in favor for it to break the tie, so it passes. Okay, next item, gas utility regulation, Chatham Street Reconstruction Project, ENG 2020-13, recommended for action that the Embrace Gas be approved to process with the gas utility regulation of estimated cost of $177,146.30. Can I have a mover on this? No mover? Counselor Rose, seconder, your worship, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? Do I have any discussion on it or any concern? All in favor? One, two, three, pass? Any opposed? No? Pass, thank you. Item four, Harbor Point subdivision phase two, initial acceptance of the driveway apron boulevard still station and erosion control to the still being guardrail barricade, ENG 2020-14, recommend for action that the initial acceptance of the driveway apron boulevard relation and erosion control is still being guide rail barricades with the phase two of Harbor Point subdivision be approved and that the deficiency holdback security for the water main, the sewage, storm sewage and street light system be released. Can I have a mover for this? Counselor by the Moncah, seconded by Deputy Mayor? Do we have any discussion, concerns or any questions to our director? Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a question to Brian. With all the troubles and the issues that we had down there with the water, all the overruns, the mud on the road, all the stuff with the fence, can you tell us very much with some certainty that this place is good to go?
Through to, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor LaRose. The, the report in front of council tonight is, is a reduction in security, so we're not releasing all of the securities that we hold for the subdivision or this, this particular phase of the subdivision. We're only releasing amounts that have been addressed. So for example, the, the storm sewer, water main deficiencies that have been addressed are being recommended for released to the developer because they have been addressed and satisfied to the, to the satisfaction of staff. We are still holding approximately 265,000 in securities for the develop to address existing claims and deficiencies that we have against the subdivision. So we are still holding back a considerable amount of money until those items are addressed. So I wouldn't say the, the subdivision is ready for assumption as we are still holding a significant portion. So I wouldn't say the subdivision is ready for assumption as we are still holding a significant portion of security funds.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any more questions or concern? Okay, we'll vote on it because we have a mover and a second. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next item, number five, the natural gas appointment of retainer agreement, RSD 2020-28. Recommended for action that council approve the renewal of the natural gas appointment and retainer agreement with the local authority service. LS, ALAS. And that the bylaw for the arena be brought forward for council's approval. This is something that comes up. I'm not sure how many. Do we have any questions? If you look at the agenda, this usually comes up. 2020, yeah, every time it's on it. So we have any, can I have a mover on this and a second? Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Sanama. Do we have any questions or concern? In favor? Pass, thank you. Six, so Jibwee Landing is ecology and human health risk assessment change order number four awarded. ENG 2020-15. Recommended for action that the council approve the change order number four to Jibwee Landing. Excuse me, 111 Robert Street West Risk Assessment Project property. The total cost of $48,200 excluding HST. And that the additional funding required to be complete the project of $103,861 be funded. By the combination of the development charges and tax fund to be outlined within the staff report. Can I have a mover for this? Counselor Vatibonkao, second. Counselor Clu, do we have any discussion on this? Counselor Cummings and then Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, this is a question for the Director. We had a contamination at the dog park on this property. Has that been remediated yet? And if not, because it was supposed to be done in the fall, were there core samples taken in that area?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Cummings. There were samples taken in the summertime when the contamination was found. That was uncovered by Bill Canada. Earlier this summer. The purpose of a portion of the bore holes that are outlined within the change order in front of council tonight. Being change order four are to help the consultant further delineate the contamination that was found by Bill Canada. Earlier this year. And once that delineation is completed, so they know the horizontal and vertical extent of that contamination. They will come up with a remediation plan to have that free product that they found in the dog park removed.
Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was basically on the same track as Counselor Cummings. But knowing that they have found something and knowing that it hasn't been done. And knowing that we're adding a $104,000 worth of a change order. Have we put any money aside for the remediation? And have we budgeted for this 104,000?
I think through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor LaRose. The additional, the change order amount of 48,000 that's being brought forward to council. Is part of the 104,000 that's being requested in the report. In the budgetary or financial implications section. I've allocated an estimated amount for the addressing of remaining costs to the project completion. Being an estimated of $40,000. So that's included in the almost 104,000 being requested. At this point, we don't know the extent, being the vertical or horizontal limits of the contamination found in the dog park. And that's the point of the change order being presented to council tonight. Once we know that information and those test results are completed. The consultant will prepare a remediation plan and will have a better idea. As to how much of the contaminated soil we found and the cost associated with that. So we have, I have provided an estimated budget amount. But at this point, it's unknown. And once that it is known, we will use that additional budgeted amounts to fund that remediation plan. And if it turns out to be more than anticipated, an additional request would have to come back to council once we know that.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks, again. Counselor Cummings.
Thank you. A question to Brian again, just clarification. You said that 48,000 was part of 103,000 that you're asking for funding. However, the request is for 48,200 and an additional 103,861. Is it a combination or is it going to be 151,000?
Sorry for the confusion. The total budgeted amount that we're requiring to project completion is 103,861, which is in the recommendation. Which is the estimated amount required for project from between now and project completion. The change order, which is in the first part of the recommendation, the 48,200 is included in that 103,86. I don't know if that answers your question, Counselor Cummings.
Shouldn't. Okay, you're okay with that, sir?
Yeah, it just, so it's 151,000 in essence. Because it's the order four, which is 48,000. And then the additional to complete the project. Is that correct?
No, that's, the 48,000 is included in the 103. To project completion. So it's not 150,000, it's 103,861.
Thank you, then. I think we need the wording of this changed, this motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. CAO.
Mr. Chair, I think the wording, I get the confusion. I think the wording, the second part of the motion is just trying to articulate that the total additional funding of 103 be split between development charges and taxation. So certainly, we could have. We could, it could be a little bit clearer. But certainly, first part of the motion is really just asking council to approve that change order. Second part of the motion, the intent there is to say the total amount we're asking for of 104. Be split in development charges taxation. So I understand the confusion and I can see how council coming.
Okay, do we have any more questions or concern? Are we changing anything? Or? No, okay, all in favor for this motion? One, two, three, four. Pass, thank you. Just lost my computer for a second, so let me go to. Okay, referral, upcoming agenda and staff referral. That the transportation of environmental service section endorse the following additional existing referral, upcoming agenda and staff. You see, we still have two items there, Church Street and the accessible transit option. Do we want to add anything or delete anything? No, can I have a mover? Whoops, Counselor Levy.
We have to add the accessible transit. We decided, Brian suggested that earlier, or someone did, we add that to referrals.
But we've got the accessible transit option.
Oh, okay.
It's the option to provide door-to-doors, the city transit service, which is coming up. Should have been up by this time around, yeah?
No, no, that's fine. It's, so that stays, good enough.
Okay. Can I have a mover for this? Counselor Sanama, and Secretary Counselor Rose, all in favor? Pass, thank you. And I guess, do we have any question from the media or the public? Do we have anybody around? Your worship, turning it back to you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayat. And with that, we go to seven, which is Section B Recreation and Community Services. And I turn it over to Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, your worship. Section seven, 7A is our consent agenda. We have no items, so we will go straight to 7B Matters for Consideration. We have one item, Georgian Queen Fee Waiver Request Follow-Up Report. Council had already dealt with this, but we had a request, I believe it was from Counselor Vatibonkor to have another go at it. So before we get started, we'll look for a mover and a second before I open that up to questions. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Levy. And do we have any questions about this? Counselor Vatibonkor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so this was, this was a request that was on our correspondence agenda at our last meeting. And I asked that it be referred to staff for report. So just to be clear on how it ended up on this agenda. And I certainly appreciate the report and the explanation provided in the report. Certainly, the operator was very much aware of the circumstances, what was happening down at the town dock. There were no commitments to a firm date in terms of completion of the construction. It's unfortunate it took a little bit longer, but certainly those things were out of the town's hands. And as was indicated in the report, there was no firm date committed to the operator with respect to when the dock would be fully operational. So I'm in support of the staff recommendation. And I just want to thank the Director for preparing a very comprehensive report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other questions on this? Seeing none, we have a mover and a second. I will call for the vote, all in favor? And that is carried. Moving down to C for our referrals. We have three outstanding ones, the outsourcing of the day camp, municipal alcohol policy, waterfront trail snow cleaning. And the Georgian Queen request. Now, would anybody like to see any of those taken off? Your worship?
I believe Counselor LaRose that we could probably remove the last two.
I would also agree if you're willing to make that motion. We'll have that moved by his worship, that the waterfront trail snow clearing and the Georgian Queen request be taken off. Do we have a second for that? Counselor Levy, all those in favor? And that is carried, seeing that we probably, oh, your Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering about the outsourcing of day camp. Did we not have a bylaw this evening?
Well, we did have our bylaw on there. And when that first came up, it was asked for by section that we leave it on there because we are going to review it within the first year. To see if it will be reoccurring. So it's only on there as a reminder.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing that we have nothing else going on, your worship, it is back to you.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. With that, we'll move on to eight, Section C Planning and Community Development Services and pass it to Deputy Mayor Dubois.
Thank you, your worship. Section is number eight, our consent agenda. We have the monthly bylaw activity report and Herona Animal Control Comparative Monthly Report. Are there any questions on those two reports? Would anyone like to pull one? Seeing none, I will recommend that action that the following consent agenda items, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Moved by Counselor Sanama and seconded by Counselor LaRose. Thank you. We have one item under matters of consideration and I will ask Counselor Clu to present this.
Sorry, Madam Chair, you did get the mover and second for those consent items, but you didn't call for the vote.
I did not, thank you for the reminder. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you, counsel. Counselor Clu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank staff for this amendment to the signed bylaw. Council will recall, this is visiting an issue that we've seen in neighboring municipalities due to hate symbols and hate speech. We, for all intents and purposes, have a very loving community, very supportive and inclusive community. This just provides our signed bylaw. A bit of some power to remove any lewd signage should there be anything that pops up. So this is new to our sign by law. Previously, we've just regulated the size and placement and so forth. But this actually allows us to review some of that content.
Do you want to call for? Would you like to call?
Should I, should I just continue? Would you like me to move?
Yes.
Yes, I'll move that.
And we have a second. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Clu. Referrals to our upcoming agenda. That planning and planning and community development services section endorse the following additional and existing referrals. To upcoming agendas and staff. We have our vacant municipal property inventory update. Our graffiti policy, review of the sign bylaw regarding hate symbols and hate speech. And MLEO policy and procedure review. So perhaps we could read, remove the review of the sign by law. Would that be agreeable at this time? Yes, okay. I guess I need a mover and a second for that. Am I Stacy to have it removed?
Yes, please.
Okay, moved by Counselor LaRose, seconded by Counselor Sanama, thank you. And now I need a mover and a second for, yes.
All in favor?
All in favor. Geez, where am I tonight? Thank you. The other three items, I need a mover and a second for the three items, the vacant property, the graffiti and the hall of fame procedures. Moved by Counselor Cummings, seconded by Counselor LaRose. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you, counsel. Thank you for your assistance. Question period from the media or the public of which we have none. Your worship, I will send it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And with that, we move on to nine, Section D Finance and Corporate Services. And I pass it on to Counselor Vatibonkor.
Thank you, worship. This is the Finance and Corporate Services, Section nine in your agenda. We have one item under the consent agenda and it has to do with the Roney Airport Strategic Plan Update. There are three memos in your package. The first one provides a timeline from the CAO with respect to the strategic plan development and when it will be in front of council. Are there any questions on this particular consent matter?
Yes, Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for council's information, we did receive a presentation from the Lumex Corporation in conjunction with the three CAOs from the municipalities. All that work has been done. It's coming back to the commission. We are meeting and dealing with it a week early because of Christmas. So this should be able to be all wrapped up from our point of view by Thursday. And then, as the report indicates, the CAO is setting up a meeting between all three councils to do one joint meeting in the new year.
Thank you, Counselor Rose, Counselor Sanama.
Thank you. I was, just a question. When I was reading through the report, I was just looking at like the per capita subsidy and ours. And ours, like from the town of Penetangasheen, is the highest. I mean, I don't know whether you have the answer as to why it is substantially different, say, from the township of Tiny. I was more of a curiosity question.
Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have asked that question many times, and the only answer that was ever provided was that fifty-some-odd years ago, when it was set up, that was the agreed-upon a way to do it in the bylaws, and it's never been changed. So since then, we haven't grown as fast as some of the municipalities. So it may be hurting us a little bit, but that's one of the items that is going to be looked at as part of this review.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. CAO, I see you popped up. Did you have anything to add, or was that fine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. LaRose and I are thinking on the exact same train of thought.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Any, any further comments? On this? Okay, so we have a mover then for this referral item that the following consent agenda item having been due consideration, been given due consideration, be received for information. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Rose, a seconder. Counselor Sanama, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We have no matters for consideration this evening. And the last item is referrals for upcoming agenda and staff, and we have the one item. And that is the Ronia Airport Commission Joint Business Operation Review. We're just speaking about that, and that will be coming forward in January. And so there's, are there any amendments to the referral list that anybody wants to bring forward? Seeing none, then I'll read the motion that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorsed the following additional existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. And it's the Ronia Airport Commission. May I have a mover, please, for that? Counselor Cummings, a seconder. Counselor Rose, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And before I hand it back to you, your worship, I just want to express my thanks to Vice Chair Counselor Cummings and CAO Lee's Clerk Cooper, Treasurer Robeyard, who supported me as Chair of Finance and Corporate Services for the last two years. It's been a very enjoyable experience, and I want to thank you as I head over to planning and development with Chair Levy. Look forward to that. And wish Counselor Sanama and Counselor Mayat all the best with the Finance and Corporate Services Section. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vatibankor. And with that, committee, the whole is adjourned. And before we move into our special council meeting, we are going to be losing some of our staff. And so before that happens, I just want to thank you all for an excellent job that you have performed and done through this horrific pandemic. You have been real role models, and you have done a super job through this whole transition. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself, and I am sure on behalf of council. And for those of you who I may not see again before the Christmas break, I just want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and that time that you will have and well spent with your families. So with that, I am going to move on into our special council meeting.
Thank you, your worship, for those kind words. I'm sure our staff are all very appreciative of that. So we'd maybe just take a minute to let them all.